Okay, Mrs. Nada, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montpel County Board of Education approved this meeting. Notice of the meeting has been posted at the Municipal Building, all Montpel Public Schools, the Montpel Public Library, the Montpel County Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the Montpel Public School Website, and advertised in the Daily Record.
Thank you. High School, Shannon, our high school representative, Shannon?
Hi. So, on the sports front, the boys' basketball team was selected as the sportsmanship winner in our division, selected by coaches and players throughout the American Division. In addition, the girls' basketball team was selected as the runner-up for the sportsmanship award in their division. For clubs, at the FBLA State Leadership Conference in East Brunswick, Montpel had five categories of business communications, marketing, management, information systems, parliamentary procedure, and impromptu speaking. The twelve students who final also qualified for Nationals in Nashville, Tennessee, which will take place this June. From March 28th to 30th, Montpel's Key Club attended the 68th Annual New Jersey Key Club District Convention. At the event, our Key Club was honored with many awards, including first-place Platinum Single Service Award for VBN, as well as the Outstanding Contribution Award for raising the most amount of money for the Lumine Project of New Jersey, and they donated $12,000. On March 29th, Montpel's History Club competed at the Seton Hall Regional of New Jersey History Day at Seton Hall University. Montpel had a total of forty-four students hall-fried for the state competition, which will take place on May 3rd. Categories range from individual written papers to group websites, documentaries, exhibits, and performances. For information regarding our school, at the Northern New Jersey Junior Science and Humanities Posiama Rutgers Jr., Paige Hamel, who was part of the MTHS's Science Research Program, ranked second in oral presentations for her research in resistance of long-term survival-phase cells to oxidative stress. Paige will now compete at the National JSHS in Washington DC this month. Senior Cindy Way was selected as recipient of the NJSCPA Scholarship. She was one of the top fifty-six finalists from a pool of two-hundred-and-forty-three applicants and will be honored at a ceremony on April 24th. Twenty-four students from MTHS recently had their artwork selected for the 26th Annual Blackwell Street Jury Student Art Show. The students' work will be displayed through April 29th at the Atrium Gallery of Nemours County Administration Building. And for upcoming events to look forward to, Montpel County Place School's Sprint Spirit Week is officially scheduled for April 21st through 25th, with a lot of fun being such as a Gemma Day and Pink Day for Cancer Awareness in collaboration with Relate to Life, which will be later on. And finally, as many of you may know, Montpel recently suffered a grave tragedy as we lost a member of our community. Andrew's son was a student here who graduated a few years earlier, and as are our high school student representatives, Zan, who's not here tonight, and I would like to take this chance, on behalf of our entire school, to extend our deepest condolences to all of Andrew's friends and family. Please know that you are all in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you very much, Shannon.
Any questions from the board for Shannon?
Thank you.
Superintendents' report?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, everyone. And I know when they have the Board of Education, we do express our condolences to the son and daughter. Under my remarks tonight, my first category is the park testing, the field testing which took place. Just out of curiosity, any of the students in the audience, did you take the park tests? Anybody here? Were you one of those lucky classes selected? I guess I don't see any hands up. So, I did want to give the Board and community a report on what we found. Dr. Casey Schuler, our Assistant Superintendent in charge overall of our testing program throughout the district, and we did have the testing take place in our five elementary schools, middle school and high school. Actually, I think perhaps William Mason will be in the spring only, I'm not sure about that, and some of our schools will be involved again. And interestingly enough, we were very pleased that the complex technology required for the testing actually did work. So, from that perspective, the state's education department and the companies that have created the assessments and put them forward have done a pretty foolproof job with regards to making sure that the assessments kept up and running. And I want to particularly acknowledge Austin Thompson, our technology manager, and his staff for the amazing job they did and their hard work, in fact, putting that all together. One of our members, Mark Leber, is back there with us tonight, who is certainly also very responsible for that, in terms of getting that well-connected and running well. Andrea, Casey, and I all spent time in schools observing the assessments taking place, and one of the things that we noticed was that our students were very, very successfully using the technology. Keyboarding skills did not, even at our youngest ages, slow them down. They were able to create the paragraphs necessary to manipulate the keyboard, the mouse, to use the various dropdown menus to do the things they needed to do. In speaking to students and hearing their comments, sometimes the content is challenging, as we expect it to be, as the new assessments are in fact assessing the new Common Core curriculum. But I think as we look at the field testing and looking forward, I think we're in good shape to move forward into next year, when next year at this time, the assessments, of course, are actually going to be scored and counted, so to speak, in terms of our student and school performance. Any questions from the board about the park field testing? Okay. I do have just another quick item to mention, that is on the agenda tonight, and that is for the Board of Education to approve revisions in the calendars for 2014, '15, and 2016 school years. These are the revisions that were discussed out in public at our last board meeting, which moves us from only four snow days in the calendar to seven, and in both cases extends the school year by a couple of days in order to make that happen. So, the Board has those calendars in their package, and once that's approved, we will make sure that not only do new calendars get posted on our website, but we will ask our parent organizations to help us by setting out calendars for each of our households in the district, so that the parents receive a copy that way as well, so that they are all set for next year. And that's it, my report.
Thank you. Do you want to move right into the presentations?
Yep. So, our Shop Right Stars are not being given their rewards this week. In fact, we will be moved that to our next board meeting, which is April 29th, when those same individuals will be honored. So, that presentation will be moved to April 29th on its board meeting. So, we're going to move right into our Wazarr World Language Spanish presentation, and with us tonight, I can see, of course, some of our administrators from Wazarr Middle School, Sharon Corr, principal, and Travis Hully, our assistant principal, are here. So, we thank them for attending. What I'd like to now do is introduce Ms. Jamie Novak, who will introduce her students. And, Ms. Novak, would you, is this okay for the board to be hearing, for the board and the audience? I know we're going to go into the audience for the next presentation anyway.
We're gonna, they're gonna get you up.
I'll be moving.
You're looking a little bit. I just figured you would stand over here, so maybe kind of face both of you, is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. Thank you so much for having us. They're so excited. Come on over, guys. Hi. Hi. Ah, we have a parent. Who's that? Did I say that again? All right, guys, let's talk in turn here, and we'll take turns. So, Emily's gonna talk about the beginning. Well, I guess I'll just, I'll set it up. This is a project that I invented, actually, I was in the car, sitting in traffic on the way home from shore, Labor Day weekend, a couple of years ago, and it's, all I ever hear is, you know, I can't hear Spanish, and I can't remember anything, and it just, and I think all language teachers have faced the same challenge, like, I don't want to hear that, I just want them to remember. It was because I had friends, I live in town, so, like, you know, some of my friends', kids' ended up being my students, and I was on the beach with a friend and her kids, and I had had her child in my class that marking period, like, the fourth marking period that year, and she, I was trying to quiz her, and she couldn't remember anything, and I was pulling my hair out, I was like, "No, no, don't tell me this." So, I just started thinking, I wasn't driving, I just started thinking, "How can I try to make this more meaningful? How can I find a way, like, make it stick, to tie it to something that's meaningful for them, that they remember?" So, I said, "Oh, it's actually your house, your house, I mean, your houses, you're surrounded by your house every day, you see chairs every day, you see a toilet every day, you see a sink every day, you see a fridge. I'll tie it to the house, and then maybe that'll help them remember." And then I'm studying the thematic unit and project-based learning, and it just all kind of fell together, and I just started, what I started doing was, well, I won't explain to you what I started doing. So, Emily's gonna explain, like, the first steps.
Sure. Well, um, we have, yeah, um, we start off from our own theory, and the project we decide on the topic, like, a theme for our house, and then we break up into groups of two or three, and we had like three or four weeks to get together and make a group for the house. We don't just construct the house, we have to each have our own three minutes, we have to label everything, we just make mostly everything by hand, and we have to label everything, and no one would come in and part the house at all, you manage that, and then bring them into class, and we do the activities that make the people feel comfortable. Hola. Hola, mi nombre es. Okay, as she said before, the whole of the house is designed to be built on it, so after that, we construct the actual house.
Why did we have to team? Why did we make a team?
We did the team because it was really fun, so we could just make a house that looked interesting, and we can make it look nice, and it wins. So, for like, constantly still, we like to make the house, and it's still there, the baby car's house, we thought, like, how the house can be a baby car, then we thought a free house is a baby car, so we suspended the whole house, and like, still, so it looks like a baby.
Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Alicia. I'm in the Hamel Club. Um, every room is based on a theme, so in the kitchen, we would talk about, like, food, so you would say, when you went to a station, you would talk to things, you'd say things about food. So, for the kitchen, it would be, what do we have for breakfast, and then those you could split, to become a conversation. So, we have the breakfast, lunch, dinner, and what do you want to drink? So, tonight has got us to become a conversation.
Learning station, yeah. Tell her about the learning stations, the car.
Okay. Um, the cars, we had, we had stations, and we would go around the group, and it would be, be with our groups, and we'd say, like, "What's everything?", and everybody would go around the classroom, and at each station, we would have an E X card, and the E X card was all the questions that you could ask. So, and then red, you had something to replace. So, for, let's say, you wanted to drink something, like, you would say, "I want to drink black", and we would have to do.
What about the other rooms? What about the dining, the bathroom, what did we learn in that?
For the bathroom, it was, what color is your eyes, your hair, the question, where is the bathroom? And we watched a video, which is the head shows in Spanish.
So, it was body parts related to the bathroom. And then what else did we have? We had the playroom, what did we learn there?
And then it's, we, we would like have, oh, we'd have touch colors, so we'd have, like, touch colors, green, in, in actual house, so we also created, and you can access what color. Yeah, it was game called, and somebody would say, "Oh, that's a yellow", but it was fun.
And what other rooms did we have? Dining room, what did we learn about the dining room?
Um, like, the American was.
Samelia, bedroom?
The bedroom was the, uh, what are you wearing?
What are you wearing? How are you feeling?
Uh, the kitchen.
Kitchen, office.
The office was numbers, like, would you fill a number for a day?
Necesito más.
Okay, um.
Remember, necesito más?
Dinero.
Dinero.
Oh, right.
Right? Okay, what else? Molly, what do we have to say? She kind of forgot. If you think of it, say it.
Um, well, um, we went from, uh, we, yeah, and then, and then about how we were looking at this project, um, we went to the other, because it actually gives you things to think about, like, the knowledge, the things about what we share, and so, actually, my house, so, um, like that, I would know that, um, it's there, it's, and, 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 like, this project, because, I mean, I can't do something, but I have to actually do something that involves, um, to actually understand doing this, so I like, um, building, and, and, and so, um, I'm going to, um, and, 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 and,
I can tell you the board members don't watch leaf. Oh, we're being rounded up. Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Adios, byeos, and dios.
Before, before, um, this go back goes, just let me make a couple of comments.
Sorry, guys. Guys, hold on for one second.
So, so just so our audience and board could kind of put this in context, in our sixth grade, uh, we offer, uh, four language courses, the same courses that are offered at our high school and in our ZS program, uh, Spanish, French, Italian, and Mandarin. Um, and, um, no matter, of course, it's each of these Spanish introductions, so the students take this course for ten weeks and then they, uh, throughout their sixth and seventh grade years, they're introduced to all four languages. And I think this is a wonderful example of project-based learning, hands-on learning, and as just someone pointed out, trying to, um, through, through this interactive way of learning, having the learning stick, if you will, so that the students can, uh, can really understand it and move on and they'll move on in the future. So, I know on behalf of the board, we want to thank, uh, all of our students and, um, and, and the go back as well for being here tonight.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you, guys, for recording and bringing me. Thank you.
Thank you, Marys, for being out tonight with your video show. We appreciate that.
The kid got stuck in my car. Thank you so much.
Our next presentation this evening, and we're very fortunate because we always really enjoy and benefit from having our students and programs, um, here at the Board of Education meetings. Our next program is from our forensics program at the high school. And, um, it's Mary Gordon, who's the advisor for, uh, that program, is here with us tonight. And that's Sam, our principal, is here as well. Um, and, um, I know that we're going to have two students here, but, um, Noah Ryan Flash is ill and unfortunately can't be with us. Um, so Joshua Feldman is here this evening to, uh, carry the show, if you will, and I think the presentation will work better if the board will please, uh, join us in the audience, uh, for, um, Josh's, um, presentation.
Just like to take a minute to introduce Josh and just tell you a little bit about what he's going to be presenting tonight. Um, Josh is representing our very, um, sixty-three-strong active membership, uh, this evening. Uh, he is no stranger to success. Uh, this will be his third year of qualifying to the NCFL Grand National Tournament in Chicago, a second year of qualifying to the, um, National Forensics League, um, tournament in, uh, Kansas. Uh, he is this year's state champion in Norse Interpretation, as well as qualifying to the Grand National Tournament in Oral Interpretation. Uh, that consists of every other round, reading a poetry selection, and then a prose selection, and then at the end of the day, um, having, uh, selected as our representative from the, um, Diocese of Oregon, um, to do that oral interpretation, uh, Memorial Day weekend. So, tonight he is going to read to you, uh, from this poetry selection. Um, turn this over to, uh, Josh.
So, who's the wettest dude in the joint with all the fins and scales? Aquaman, that's right. Zero degrees be the freezing point. H2O, I can't wait to float. What does it stand for? You should know, kid. Hazardous to opponents. Me? A role model? Uh, no. Uh, you see, it was as if no one had even seen me until I mastered the science of shrinking my body down to a particle level. I mean, yes, I fight to save the world from destruction, but I also fight to hear my lover, Gene Morey, say yes to marriage. I mean, I shrunk to near invisibility, just so that one girl would...
Well, listen, it isn't even my planet, I just work here. A man of letters, mild mannered, nerves of less than steel. I mean, yes, I can outrun almost anything. Thieves, mid-range sports sedans, can chew a mouthful of coal into a cut of diamonds. But I'm not as duffing as you all dream. I still get sleep apnea, hemorrhoids, runs in my tights. And, well, and I don't believe in superheroes. I mean, nobody is invincible. We all melt at a certain temperature and crack under pressure, so no. Yeah, I don't believe in superheroes, meaning for now, I simply have myself on immaculate conception. No need for kryptonite, to take this life, there to be no injection, because I don't believe in superheroes. We always make out our heroes to be perfect. We idolize them because they embody everything that we cannot possibly achieve. But this blind idealization can lead to worse self-expectations and a detrimental state of mind. Through the poems "Aquaman" by Droopy, "I Can" by Brian Deitrich, "Kid" by Simon Arminich, "Superhero" by Sheldon Rick, "Adam" by Avon Jordan, and "Invincible" by Carlos Contreras, we can see that even our superheroes are just as mortal as you and me. Superhuman, a program, because nobody is perfect. And it's about time we stop forcing ourselves to be.
Aquaman, yeah, I'm all H2O. Hard to obliterate, whether in a solid gas or liquid state, in a cloud, in a glass, or in a glacier. My river floods you with the knowledge and wisdom that I am just like you. My nation, check my hydration. Three-fourths of the globe knows my Morse code, and they say hi by waving. Yeah, my flow is an unholy rap, more Lakers than Kobe and Shaq. So many flows in my nap, that I part my hair with Moses's staff. Yeah. When it comes to flow, son is wool. Son of a man and a woman, I was born normal. So, I convinced myself at an early age, yo, forget Superman. He ain't even half as amazing as my dad, so I'll just believe in him. I mean, sure, you can fly to save falling babies from burning buildings, or stop a bank robbery by turning back the time, but when he held you in his arms, time didn't seem to matter so much. So, I packed a brown bag for lunch, because as far as superheroes went, they didn't outfit a custom tin to show kids mine. You know, I could always catch my superhero at the same dad place, at the same dad time. He's nodding off and trying not to relapse and flashback to old dreams and fatigues. He fought in Vietnam. And when he survived, he was spit on, like the enemy. So, when I say I don't believe in superheroes, perhaps you begin to understand what I mean. I mean, life isn't always thermorupular trust funds, greenpeace for guns, heavy metal milk lobbyists. None of it excites me the way it used to. You know, if I could, I'd curl up in my cape with an old comic, an orange soda, a little of holiday. No telephone booths, just Ming the merciless to take me away. Oh, well, stuff happens. Worlds collide, babies fall out of the sky and grow up and get lives. Anyway, uh, I took this position because frankly, it looked like a job for Aquaman, Drewie the Fluid Boy, not superhumanoid. Girls, you know I got game, 'cause many women been tricked into skinny dipping with Mick. Yeah, she called me Daddy Aqua. We did the breaststroke and kept it float. You see, you need me to live, but too much or he can still kill you, you know? My whole plan is raw, bringing light to the darkness like cloak and dagger pause, screw a car. I ride a Portuguese man of warmth against evil men in helicopters to save the damsel in distress. And do it all, I'll never tire, never take a vacation, and, uh, my makeup will be perfect, and I'll never break a nail, and I won't worry about relationships, because who wastes time for being social when your occupation is saving the world? And, you know, somehow, year after year, I'll win, 'cause I'm the good guy. And the hell lose, 'cause they're not. You know, it's just that I think I'm getting tired of being necessary. I mean, you don't know what it's like, hardly feeling a thing, seeing through people, overhearing assassination plots two countries over, and still needing a new pair of underwear on my Christmas. I mean, one day I hate the boots, the belt, the bikini, this S applique, the next I feel like punching every dweeb I see. You know, my dad warned me it might be like this. He said, "Son, you'll only wanna come home." Problem is, Dad, I can't. Have any of you ever been truly happy? I don't think I have. I can't. So, as a kid, I don't waste time or money tugging at comics wrapped in plastic. I just wrap my eyes and ears around the stories of my dad and ask him, "Dad, do you believe in superheroes?" And he said, "Sure, son, I believe in you. And I believe in your excellence, you can only imagine what you'll do." So, I said, "Well, Dad, that should make you a superhero too." He responded, "No, son." Sometimes our powers leave us when they're through. Strength only comes to those that need it. And I pass mine along to the brightest kid I know. You know, this whole role model thing, it gets old fast. I mean, I can only get so small. But, but what do I do that's so special? Why does everybody want to be me? I mean, I shrink, flash runs, Wolverine slashes, but I need not list those that are marvelous. Superman flies, Wonder Woman whips, Batman. The point is, these are just powers. The superpower is believing in yourself, not trying to be one of us. You know, I've only pushed people away since I've got mine. I think I'd like to give them back now. I want to take a break from being something more than normal. And it was then when I began to believe, realizing all this superhero stuff didn't need to come with the capes and masks and flawlessness. I found that it was possible to be human and a superhero, as long as you don't misunderstand what superhero entails. Yeah, about being a superhero, I learned the very first thing. That I didn't have to believe in superheroes. That I am a superhero, not because of this, or this, or this. No. I am a superhero, because my hero believes in me. So, who's the wettest dude in the joint with all the fins and scales? Aquaman, that's right. Zero degrees be the freezing point at which I spins my tails. And yet I wonder, why don't they just call me average man? I mean, I know I talk the big game, but what is it about that Aqua that makes me so much more than a man? You see, I dropped to land where my rain is expelled from the clouds, and I submerge in my waterbed, buried not in H2O, but in O-H, basic. What's it stand for? Kid, by now you surely know. I'm only human. So, that's poetry? I'm really ashamed that you guys don't get to see Noah tonight. Uh, he's by far been the most successful, uh, competitor, I think, on our teams here. Uh, he's blown us all away with the amount he's improved, the work he's put in. Uh, I mean, just, he never ceases to amaze me. Uh, he's amazing at the Harvard Tournament, which is one of the hardest tournaments to compete in, and, I mean, you guys are really missing out, but I hope I can sort of, uh, give you an idea of what we do with that. And, yeah, I mean, hopefully, next year, you guys will get to see him, because the stuff he writes is extraordinary. So, thank you.
Are you a, what, what grade are you?
I'm a, I'm a senior.
You're a senior, please. You know, for we as members of the board and for the public as well, allowing us to see what forensics is all about, really adds another pass to our experience. I don't think, you know, we all know what the band does, we all know what the football team does.
When you say forensics, everyone thinks blunt.
Right, and there's so many other, uh, uh, different types of forensics. You showed us tonight one type, and I'm assuming that was original poetry.
Um, well, what you have to do is, you have to find a collection, it's not original poetry, um, but it's an original program. So, basically, you have to, um, scour everything to find poems that fit, like a thesis that you write, um, and put them together in a way that makes sense of your point. So, that's that.
What other kinds of forensics are there?
Well, I also, this year, have done prose, which is, you take a novel, or, you know, like a book, and you, um, cut, you, it's called oral interpretation. You take your own interpretation of that. So, again, you, the single-person performer would, um, act out every single character if they had multiple characters. Um, it's another binder event, so they would be reading it to you. It's sort of like a storytelling, like they're telling you a story. Um, and so, that would be like, my freshman year, I did, um, To Kill a Mockingbird, and it's mine. And so, I cut out, uh, P, uh, just a chapter, it's again, like just ten minutes of that and perform that, um, for my prose. There's also, my other event is humorous interpretation, uh, that's my favorite, uh, because I love making people laugh, uh, very enjoyed people.
We need that interpretation.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, it can get, I would say for people who haven't seen forensics, or like aren't really involved in forensics, I feel like HI, humorous interpretation, can sometimes get a little bit confusing, um... That's why I decided to try to do this one today, because I don't want to lose you guys. Don't underestimate, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of running around, different characters, a lot of stuff going on.
You make jokes.
Yeah, so, that would be taking a play or something. And obviously, it can be something, I've seen people do very dull things, like very sad things. Take them and turn them into very funny. Last year, someone took the original handbook of Boy Scouts from, what was it, 1902 or something? And they took that and they performed it as an HI, as a satire on, like, the racism and stuff that happened back then. And it was hilarious. So, most of these things are basically, even if you don't write it yourself, and Noah wrote it himself, that's oratory, where that's like a persuasive speech. But even when you don't write them yourself, there's usually, the competitor has their own spin on everything.
And they each write their own introduction, where they develop their thesis. So, that's what, when he closed his binder, he gave you what his purpose was for doing that particular group of poems.
I thoroughly enjoyed it. This, to me, is just reminiscent of something that you might see at an intimate court theater, John Bolton Court Theater, you know, one man soliloquied, it lasted an hour. It wasn't an hour, obviously, but it was, it felt like I was getting a small slice of heaven or something like that, but just brought me back to some of the highlights.
That's the creative side.
Yes, so, right, so then...
For mature members of the audience, who might just know about me and talk about...
Right, so, we also have, well, I want to say, there's also, I would say, we also have some speech events that are not so creative, such as X-Step, like Zepanga speaking, and that is, you would give a speech on, like, current events. But yes, there's also debate, which is, we have Lincoln Douglas Debate, named after the famous Lincoln Douglas Debate, which is a one-on-one debate, and that's usually ethics, right? Yeah, that one, so they usually are invading ethics.
So, the topic that our debater will be doing at the Grand National Tournament is that the public's right to know should be valued above personal privacy. And so, obviously, it will entail a lot of what's gone on in the news recently with Patriot Act and NSA, and what we might perceive as invasion of our privacy. So, and that's generally the focus of the Douglas Debate.
Is that the national topic this year?
That's the national topic.
And then, there's Public Forum, which is, a public forum, it's two versus two, and that's also current events, right?
It is, and that's, it's actually based on, Ted Turner gave an enormous amount of money to believe he is a formal debater. And it was originally called Ted Turner Debate, and then it became, became, you know, as Public Forum, and it was based on his concept of Crossfire, which is on CNN.
And when all these things come together, you get forensics, which, actually, is it, is it still called forensics? If we get it still called so, the league recently renamed itself the National Speech and Debate Association, because I guess kids are running around saying, "We made it to the NFL." I don't know.
And it was also because the National Forensics League were increasingly getting phone calls from different police forces, asking them if they could provide some testimony at court cases concerning forensic medicine. Yeah, the irony is, is that forensics, the original meaning of forensics is the art of argumentation and persuasion. And if you go to the dictionary, it is the first meaning of the word. But CSI and other TV shows like that has kind of changed our perception of what it is. And so, the league has been going through a rebranding over the last year. And the National Forensics League will still be associated with the Honor Society. This is considered a national honor society. Students are expected to maintain a certain GPA, as well as follow an honor code, which is part of the weekly tournaments, is always published there. So, that part will still be called the National Forensics League, but the umbrella organization will now be called the National Speech and Debate Association.
And I just want to say, like, I have always been a science guy. I love science, I love math. There are some other people in the, I mean, we have all these different events and topics that you can choose from in forensics or speech and debate, I guess it's been called. And I know a lot of creative people doing the creative side, a lot of very scientific, they like to have everything organized out, doing that side. But I love how the community and this club has allowed me to sort of blur the lines of, like, I mean, I want to go to college and study to be an engineer, and I guess I'll be the engineer that can perform. So, I love the, that notion, and that's one of my favorite parts of this club, is that it's not so much, like, thrusting you into like a play, or like a drama, or like, that type of acting, but there's all these different creative art forms and expressive ways to, ways to express yourself, other than just like being very, it's like debate cool or something like that. And that's what's really important to me about this, so, hopefully, now that they've changed, more people will know what we're doing.
You'll have to come back.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again. Good luck next year in college.
Thank you.
Okay, that was great, that was really, really great. Thank you for reading it. Business administrators report, Charlie, do you want to do that with your facilities and finance report? Are you trying to dance with that?
Kind of gree. Finance report, we met on April 2nd. You have copies of the minutes, I just wanted to highlight a couple of them. First of all, the oil replacements at the high school in Hilldale are ninety-nine percent complete. Also, the locker room project, and we've been told by the administration that the two dumpsters in the front of the school are going to be moved to the back of the school, which will also give us a little bit more parking. We are receiving proposals, big documents to be completed by April twenty-ninth from our engineer. This is for renovating the present high school baseball fields and softball fields. High school media center renovations are moving along. We received proposals for some professionals, and the superintendent will be making that distribution to the members of the committee shortly. We also have high school lacrosse wall donation, that's moving ahead. We now are before the DLE, hope to get that up as soon as possible. And finally, most of the other stuff is on the agenda. Food service operation is up for bid, you're only allowed to renew for so many years, so we will be accepting bids for the cafeteria operation effective with the next school year. That's basically it. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Charlie. Any other committee reports? Curriculum?
Yes, curriculum end on March twenty-seventh, and we discussed... We discussed a variety of topics at the CIT committee meeting on March twenty-seventh. Dr. Freekhan spoke to the committee regarding certain thoughts that he has regarding changes to the oral language program at the middle school. This is only in the talking stage and the investigation stage, in order to tweak the program to provide some expanded opportunities for our students at Lazar. There's also discussion by Ms. Salvagi regarding the recent park field testing. Overall, it went very well, and district-wide, it seems that the children, especially the younger ones, who are most concerned about, didn't have any difficulties really manipulating the technology that was involved. Although, I think, from a certain perspective, we're somewhat concerned about the content of the materials, but that was, I think, predicted in respect to what we were seeing with the park testing. The committee also reviewed the AP, the proposed AP Biology textbook, which is, one of the functions of the committee is to review textbooks before they're approved. There are still undergoing in the district minor tweaks that are being considered to the recent report cards that will be banned to make them compliant with the Common Core. The revisions that are being thought about are actually minor and just intended to clarify the grading standards for parents. We're still undergoing curriculum revision, which is constantly ongoing in the district, and we have several topics or content areas that are being rewritten to make them conforming with the Common Core. That's most of the major topics we're covering.
Any questions for Carmelo? Okay, policy personnel?
April twenty-eighth, right, easy.
Safety and security, John?
Yeah, March nineteenth, we met. We basically discussed that we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget for this year to conduct different types of initiatives within the district, and another hundred fifty thousand dollars for next year, which we were discussing future initiatives and what we plan to do. We also had talks about our lockdown procedures, and how well they're going in the district, and also some thoughts on what we're gonna be doing for the future with it.
Any questions for John on that topic? Okay, any delegate liaisons on?
I have some reports from Morris County School Boards. There's been a big buzz recently about two pieces of legislation that have been introduced, which would eliminate the superintendent's salary cap, A twenty-nine thirty and S nineteen eighty-seven have been introduced. We have a resolution on the agenda tonight in support of this legislation. Recently, a group of us met with Assemblyman Jay Weber to indicate to him our support at the school district. It was board members, parents came, and I really appreciated the parents attending. There were school board members from Michael, school board members from Morris Plains, and also representative from New Jersey School Boards. We plan to meet with Senator Pinaccio on April fifteenth. Anyone interested in going on our board, please let me know. And on April thirtieth, Morris County School Board Association is conducting a meeting. It will be, the topic of the evening is going to be the legal aspects of social media. However, there will be, the Cedar Hill Fifth Grade Character Ed Committee is doing a presentation right at the top of the meeting, and it's our intention at that meeting for the county to pass a resolution in support of these pieces of legislation. So, any member of this board who, it's a simple majority vote, so the more yes votes we have, the better we are. So, if you would like to attend that meeting, please let me know, let Jim know, so you can register. And that's what I would like to say about Morris County School Boards. Are there any other delegate liaison reports from, I know Mike, you need coverage for tomorrow night?
If that's possible, if not, I can probably read it from around fifteen minutes.
So, Mike is in need of a DAC rec, if anyone is interested in attending in his place. Any other liaison reports, Mike?
Oh, no.
No, Mike, Mike up.
Couple of things...
Next year, maybe one sits there. Mike, Mike up.
I told him, if he doesn't listen, a couple of things from the Mustang Association, no particular priority. They met April fourth, and of course, Principal Stanford and the athletic director, Mr. Piquetello, addressed most of their concerns. They, Mr. Piquetello did present some interesting information about changes, regulations that are going to begin to effect shortly regarding physicals. For students to have approved physicals moving forward, they don't know any data manipulation, the physicians have to do an online course to be certified to the school to accept the physicals. Also, going into effect at some point soon will be Janet's Law regarding the presence of defibrillators at certain locations on the field, buses, here, there, you'll have to be trained about those interesting things. I say about that. They mentioned, thank you for the follow-up from the superintendent last one, on some of their concerns. The Mustang Dinner is June eleventh. They are going to have greater communication, they said, with our new communications person. This is Baron Delver, to provide information about the happenings of the Mustangs. Next year, they, a few people leaving the association, executive board in here, seeking people to replace, take positions on the executive board. One thing that was the clarification was sent to the president of this, of the association of schools, and I guess Mr. Piquetello may just say something, which types of gifts have to be from certain vendors, etc., as a member of the association.
Thank you, Mike. I voted your man up to the board. Were there any PTC liaison reports?
I have one from Cedar Hill. They asked an interesting question, and maybe Barbara, you could pass it along to Jim. They had a question about different bus schedule, a different snow bus schedule. In other words, on days that it snows. So, other than that, there was some discussion about the park, the upcoming park, which already happened, and the New Jersey, state of New Jersey honorable mention for Cedar Hill as a character, tool of character.
Any other PTC liaison reports? All open and announced to public for items on the agenda. Anybody care to say anything about the agenda items?
Hi, I'm Terriann, Threesilver Drive in Pine Brook. I just wanted to say that concern about keyboarding skills during the park testing did come up in our Woodmont and Lazar PTA and PTC meetings, so it was reassuring to hear Carmelo and Novy say that during the field testing, the keyboarding seemed to be a non-issue, so that's great to hear.
Thank you, Terri. I will point out, if Terri doesn't mind, that Terri was one of the parents who attended the meeting with Senator Pinaccio, with Assemblyman Weber. And Terri hopefully plans to attend the meeting with Senator Pinaccio. So, it's important for our representatives to understand that community members are involved as well. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? If not, motion for items J to O, putting the agenda?
Motion.
John, is that John? Ben Frank. Any questions on J? Okay.
There are no questions, I'm very happy to see J three on the agenda.
Ready to get?
Can you hear me, Matt?
J? Oh, yes, yes, I did. Thanks, Matt. K? L?
I have, I'm sorry, I'm stepping on a new item. Item K, I am pleased to see that. Directly installs a program whereby utilizing grants to upgrade our lighting and other fixtures in the district to save the district cost of energy. So glad to see this all along as a multi-year project.
Thank you, Matt. Anything on L? M? And? Yes, no, no answers. Okay. Roll call, please? Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Dr. Motor?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mrs. Novy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Dr. Portolino?
Yes.
Okay, under General Board comments, we have an eagle ceremony coming up on May 17th. Anybody else? Because I cannot.
What is it, Karen?
May 17th, an eagle ceremony.
Karen, I'm hosting. Oh, I'm hosting like that. I will go.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So, we'll keep in touch, because I want to make sure somebody gets there.
Karen, what time is it?
It's actually on Saturday.
Uh, let's see. I didn't, yeah, didn't write it down. It's Saturday, it's usually one or two o'clock, something like that, and they usually last two hours.
Actually, I host.
You have it there on the floor, Tom?
Me too.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
It says two o'clock.
Two o'clock, good. All right, so Mike, you cannot do that hand, so three of us.
Present now.
Okay, thank you. And also, we have an upcoming BOETC subgroup committee meeting on 21st at 9:00 AM. We have, Charlie's going, I'm going, I'll be, David, are you going? Is that one? Mike, one of you? It's Board of Education, County Committee.
Yes, I am.
You are, and then Frank was going to go, but Frank cannot. So, if someone else wants to step in, they can, just let me know.
What is?
It's Board of Education, County Committee. Okay.
It's the 21st at 9:00, where?
I think we're hosting. Let's see, I think that's it, unless the board has anything else. Okay, I'll open it up for second public participation for anything you want to talk about. Okay?
Over to Karen. Second.